I'd like to call this meeting to order. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes from our last Commissioners' meeting?
Motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the minutes have been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the Board on agenda items only. No, seeing that there is no one, we'll move on to the resolutions. Resolution 24-0108.
Approving the current payables. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County's general fund. Numbers 369649-370323 inclusive totaling $2,913,732.37. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $4,419,313.61. Adopted and regularly mean the Board of Commissioners held on April 17, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0108?
Motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0093.
Approving the county's intermediate punishment grant. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby approve the submission of a crime and delinquency grant application submitted by Lackawanna County Court for the county's intermediate punishment treatment program in the amount of $419,977. Adopted and regularly mean the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 17, 2024. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that as our Treatment Court Coordinator, Ms. Mary Liz Loftus.
Good morning.
Good morning. We are applying for our yearly IP grant. It starts July 1st. It's a non-competitive grant. It's not a match grant. It's just money that we get from the state. With that money, we pay for two salaries of the Treatment Court staff. We help supplement two other salaries and we pay for drug testing. We pay for electronic monitoring, bus passes, and then also services like treatment and certified recovery specialists. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
No, but you've seen a big impact with this grant in terms of people not coming back into prison, like the recidivism rate, correct?
Correct. So that's part of the grant. We collect our data to figure out how much time is saved as far as like jail days and things like that. So, and also it takes, it helps with adult probation, like we pay for some overtime and then this way the county doesn't have to pay for as many drug tests. We pay for as much as we can out of this grant.
That's great. Great program. Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0093?
Motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0094.
Certifying the match state funds to the county of Lackawanna Transit System. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby resolve and certify that it will provide the county of Lackawanna Transit System, COLTS, local funds in the amount of $968,798 to match state funds provided pursuant to 74 PACS Section 1513. Furthermore, the Board of Commissioners resolves and certifies that the required amount of local matching funds will be provided no later than the end of the calendar year 2024. Adopted and regularly mean the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 17, 2024. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that as the Chief Financial Officer of COLTS, Mr. Mike Dancheck.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Today in front of you is the resolution to certify the local match for state operating assistance. The amount in question is $968,798. This is a local match for our yearly annual Section 1513 state funding that's vital for our operations. The amount in question will go towards paying for gasoline, parts, making sure that our buses are running at its most efficient and, you know, optimal state. And it's just, it's vital for us to have this funding annually. It just, to run a transit system costs a lot of money, so the costs do go up. This amount is approximately 5% more than it was last year and is expected to grow at 5% year over year, just for budgeting purposes going forward. And so, like I said, it goes towards just the cost overall to operate our system. And if you have any questions, I'd like to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Excellent.
May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0094?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0095.
Accepting a quote on behalf of the District Attorney's Office. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby accept the sole source quote from Lonardo Company for an automatic license plate reader for the District Attorney's Office. The Lonardo Plate Reader is $26,345 with an annual warranty fee of $1,995 to be paid for by the PCCD Investigative Technology Project Grant. Adopted and regularly mean the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 17, 2024. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that as Administrative Manager, Mr. Edward Betcher.
Good morning. Back in the fall of '22, the Board approved with an application for a grant for law enforcement support technology focused. And one of the final purchases is going to be a license plate reader for the detectives. It would give an opportunity to drive through the city and scan plates without being discovered by anyone that they potentially are surveilling. The purchase is over the threshold and therefore requires the Board's approval for the $26,000 and going forward. But the device is going to be vital to the detectives. So, the final purchase, we request permission and approval of the Board.
This is a sole source contract.
Yeah. Yeah, Commissioners, we reviewed it from the DA's office and it's a sole source contract, so it's authorized under the county code.
Okay, great. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0095?
Motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0096.
Designation of agent for the 2025 Lackawanna County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA requires the hazard mitigation plan for counties to be periodically updated, and the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency PIMA has approved funding for Lackawanna County to update the 2021 hazardous mitigation plan for the county. Whereas FEMA requires the designation of an agent by the county to authorize, execute for, and on behalf of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners. Now therefore be it resolved, the Lackawanna County is hereby designate the Director of Department of Planning and Economic Development as the agent to authorize, execute for, and act on behalf of the Commissioners for the application to and forthcoming contract between Lackawanna County and PIMA for the 2025 Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. Adopted and regularly mean the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 17, 2024. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that as the Director of Planning and Economic Development, Kristin McNada.
Thanks, Chief. Good morning, Commissioners. As Chief Jeffers mentioned, the Hazard Mitigation Plan is required by FEMA to be updated periodically and FEMA provided funding for Lackawanna County to update the 2021 Hazard Mitigation Plan. No match is needed. This plan will be for 2025. This is just a designation to allow the planning department to submit requests for reimbursement in accordance with the current executed grant agreement. So this will allow me to be the new designee so that the county can be reimbursed for the consultant fees.
Great. Any questions for Mrs. McNada? All right. Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0096?
Motion.
Second.
Been a motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0097.
Approving the Economic Development Plan for Montage Mountain. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby award the economic development plan for Montage Mountain and enter into a professional service agreement with EConsult Solutions, Inc., 1435 Walnut Street, 4th floor, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, 19102, at a cost not to exceed $200,000. Adopted and regularly mean the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 17, 2024. Mr. Chairman here once again as Director McNada.
So as stated, this is to award EConsult Solutions, Inc. would be to generate a comprehensive economic development plan for Montage Mountain, which will address and plan for future growth as well as high potential and available economic development opportunities. This plan will include an analysis of business development, strategic investment in transformative projects, real estate market analysis, assessment of existing lots and land uses and infrastructure needs and assessment, which would also include utilities, broadband, roads, pedestrian infrastructure, as well as traffic and transportation. As stated, the project total is $200,000. $100,000 of that came from a grant from the Appalachian Regional Commission. The, all Appalachian Regional Commission grants require a 50/50 match. Our match will, we will use in-house GIS mapping as some of the match through that, our own in-house work, and then anything remaining of that will be, has already been budgeted with ARPA funds. Lastly, the benefit will be to address the needs on Montage Mountain and to address those needs as well as having a plan to shape the future of the mountain for us. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0097?
Motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second on the question.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. No, no, you, go ahead.
Yeah, on the question, real quick.
Sure.
You know, being able to take a look at Montage Mountain from the top to bottom to see what's there and what possibilities may be discovered, looking at infrastructure needs, options for alternative routes, future funding opportunities, all these things that could potentially be a part of Lackawanna County's future. This is something that is long overdue and, Kristin, correct me if I'm wrong, something that originated years ago.
Yes, it is. That's correct.
Well, I'm very thankful that you and your department was able to bring life back into this. It's something that's much needed, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just going to echo what Commissioner McGloin said. I think this is really important. We spent a lot of time up there over the last month and a half and we have so many assets up there. The rail riders, the pavilion, and then you have the water park, the golf resort. I could go on and on and on. So taking a look, big picture at this whole area, I think is really important for the future of Montage Mountain, so we're really excited about this.
Thanks, Commissioner.
And I think one of the biggest issues you're going to be looking into is the traffic problems and where we can put cars and trucks and campers and everything else, so.
That is correct, Commissioner.
Yep. I think it's about time we take a look.
That's right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0098.
Approving a professional service agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby approve a professional service agreement, KBA Engineering PC 25 Washington Avenue, Germantown, Pennsylvania, 18433, for design and engineering services in Dixon City and Blakely Borough in support of an awarded grant through the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection and the Bureau of Abandoned Mines Reclamation in the amount not to exceed $794,810. Now there, for be it resolved, that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners does hereby designate Kristin A. McNada, Director of the Department of Planning and Economic Development, as the official designated to sign and submit any and all documentation on behalf of Lackawanna County in support of this grant project. Adopted and regularly mean the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 17, 2024. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director McNada.
Two portions of land, one in Dixon City and one in Blakely, are in need of mine reclamation remediation. And Lackawanna has acted as the government applicant for a grant through PA, DEP, and BAMR, which is the Bureau of Abandoned Mine Reclamation, for design, engineering, and plans for proper removal of mine materials and relocation of all mine materials and spoils on both present properties as part of this project. There is no match needed by Lackawanna County. We are, we will receive administrative, administrative fee for being the applicant on behalf of the landowner. KBA Engineering already works with Dixon City and knows the properties very, very well and is aware of how to move forward on this engineering project. And the overall benefit of awarding the professional services agreement to KBA Engineering and completing this project is that these sites will be remediated and prepared for future development and use.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0098?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0099.
Accepting a proposal from Smith Miller Associates. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby accept the proposal from Smith Miller Associates for electrical engineering services in support of the addition of lighting of the underpass located on the Scranton Expressway near the mural at no cost, at the cost of not to exceed $15,000. Adopted and regularly mean the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 17, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Arts and Culture, Ms. Maureen McGuigan.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So this is an exciting opportunity as we'll be finishing the mural that's one of the major gateways into the city by the Radisson coming off the Byne Expressway. We had an opportunity to add something that we think will really enhance that whole area and be something really special. So the underpass, which maybe some of you have driven through or walked through, has been a little bit blighted in recent years and, you know, frankly, maybe not pleasant and a little unsafe to walk under. So we did some research and there's a lot of communities that have these LED lights. It's like a light installation. So we plan on cleaning up the walls and painting them and then we will implement this light installation. So step one is getting a design. So this firm came highly recommended to us specializing in this, so this is step one. And we're hoping it can dovetail with the whole mural project so we could maybe get it all done at once.
That's great. Any questions?
So, I know you've been really working hard for a long time on this project and it's, it's come alive, it's starting to look great. Has Scranton ever offered to throw some money towards this project since it comes right into the city? I mean, this comes out of all of your budget.
Well, it's funny you should say that. I did reach out to them to tell them about the project and we're trying to set up a meeting because they are also interested in cleaning up the underpass. So as of date, Commissioner, no, but perhaps going forward.
Hopefully, hopefully they will.
Thank you. Any other questions? May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0099?
Motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second on the question.
Just real quick on the question, I think this is great, Maureen. No, it's okay. It's okay. I think it's great. You said it perfectly, being able to, you know, enhance the city and really be a focal point and, you know, I know we've had a lot of discussions about the mural as well, so I think this is, this has a chance to be a really beautiful part of our city that, you know, people will be excited to, you know, drive through and take a look at. So, so absolutely, thank you.
I agree. I think it's a really good idea to brighten this area up. For a lot of years, it's been kind of dirty and blighted and an unsafe, dark area, so very difficult for pedestrians and I think it's just a generally unpleasant area to travel under. So with a mural and then this plan, I think it's going to make it one of the most unique murals in the state and underpasses, which would be pretty cool, so, thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0100.
Entering to amended license agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an amended license agreement with the Scranton Cultural Center, 420 North Washington Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, on behalf of the Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau for the April 2024 judicial tax sale. Adopted and regularly mean the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 17, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that as the Director of our Tax Claim Bureau, Ms. Maureen.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The Tax Claim Bureau will be conducting their tax sale on April 22nd at the Cultural Center. Previously, the Board approved Chaplain Hall as the venue, but due to increased interest, Chaplain Hall does not have the capacity to hold everyone. So we're just asking that we move it to the main theater at the Scranton Cultural Center.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
It should be noted, Mr. Chairman, it's because it expanded to almost 500 participants.
455 bidders, which we usually have 250, 300, and Chaplain Hall can hold 300, so if everybody shows up, we wouldn't have.
They're throwing in a free, a free play too, right?
Pardon me?
They're throwing in a free play?
Yes.
Free show?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0100?
Motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved.
Thank you.
Resolution 24-0101.
Entering into consulting services amendment agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and enter into a consulting services amendment agreement with Thomas P. Durkin of Scranton as attached here too. Adopted and regularly mean the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 17, 2024. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that as our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. David.
Good morning. In addition to providing financial consulting services to the multipurpose stadium authority, Mr. Durkin has provided assistance principally to the Department of Revenue and Finance. He's compensated at a cost of $100 per hour, which is a bargain. His total compensation for 2023 was $12,700 principally for assistance with the 2022 audit, although he did do some work as well relative to the CCI lawsuit, for which Mr. Durkin prepared some very detailed financial information. His compensation for 2024 to date is $3,100. I expect the transition from audit assistance to the CCI lawsuit. The county retains the services of an audit preparation firm, as you're certainly well aware, which will provide most of the assistance and training relative to the audit. Additional information was requested by Attorney Caputo for the CCI lawsuit, which will very likely keep Mr. Durkin involved because of his history with preparing information for that lawsuit. So it is important to keep him retained. He's going to be very involved in that lawsuit for some time.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bolzoni? Okay. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0101?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0102.
Entering into a lease agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a lease agreement with DLL Financial Services to fund the acquisition of 63 multifunctional printers from Top Copy Incorporated. Adopted and regularly mean the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 17, 2024. Mr. Chairman, once again, here's CFO Bolzoni.
DLL Financial Services will provide the financing for the equipment secured through Top Copy via the approval of the acquisition of that equipment by the Board on December 6, 2023. That approval, of course, was with Top Copy. The financing agreement that was incorporated into the Top Copy agreement was with the current vendor, Wells Fargo Vendor Financing. The county opted not to accept their financing proposal because the lease factor or rate of interest was unacceptable. The county was then referred to another vendor that participates with the Top Copy lease program, which was First Citizens Financial Services, which declined to participate. We then moved on to DLL Financial Services. DLL initially came to us with an interest rate or lease factor which equated to 9.75%, which again was unacceptable. By changing the payment terms to a single annual payment due in April of each year, which was really done to mitigate what is perceived as risk, we were able to secure a more favorable interest rate of 7% or lease factor. Total annual payments are $359,038, approximately 1.8 million over the term of the five-year contract. Important to note, this is a market value lease as opposed to a capex lease. So the market value of the equipment would remain at the end of the lease term. The county would have the option to buy it at that point or return it and renew the lease, which is typically what the county does. This is a little bit different from your traditional commercial lease, which comes with a $1 buyback at conclusion. So it's best that we use a vendor that understands market value leasing.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bolzoni on this? May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0102?
Motion.
Second.
Been a motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0103.
Entering into an agreement with Modern Group Power Systems. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a three-year agreement with Modern Group Power Systems to service generators at the Lackawanna County Prison and the 911 Center at a cost of $8,250 per year. Adopted and regularly mean the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 17, 2024. Mr. Chairman here once again, CFO Bolzoni.
This legislation is for a three-year contract with modern generator. The contract will include service to both the prison and the 911 center. Previously, any equipment maintenance work was channeled through the McClure Company as part of previous energy management services work. So as Commissioner Chermack may recall, in April of 2023, what we did was we separated the servicing from vendors to more of a direct concept as opposed to going through McClure. If you're going through McClure, they wind up taking a small fee for that referral for maintenance on county equipment. So what we had done over the past year was create contracts directly with all of these vendors. This is really the last vendor contract that we've been working on. The contract has an annual cost of $8,250 or $24,750 over the three-year period. The company is a CoStarz vendor and they have provided services, service on generators for both the 911 center and the prison previously, so they're certainly familiar with the equipment.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Bolzoni on this? Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0103?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0104.
Approving the Office of Youth and Family Services Detention Center Agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Detention Center Agreement for the fiscal year '24 through '25 with Bucks County at a per diem rate of $650 per day. Adopted and regularly mean the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April 17, 2024. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our Acting Director of Health and Human Services, Ms. Barb Durkin.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have a couple of contracts that I'm looking for your support on. The first one is a detention center contract. This is simply a contract renewal. We already have a contract with Bucks County Detention Center. It's a necessary service for individuals who are involved in our juvenile justice system. As Chief Jeffers has shared, it's, the rate is six fifty per day. There's not a great need here, but obviously, we don't have a detention center here locally. And we do have adolescents and youth involved in our juvenile justice system who need that level of care. So we need to make sure we have enough detention centers in network. This is, again, simply a contract renewal. It is fifty percent reimbursed by the state, and then the other fifty percent obviously costs the county. Are there any questions on this?
Are there generally beds available in Bucks County, or do we have a problem because they're usually full?
We have a problem across the state with detention beds being available, which is why we need to make sure that we have enough detention centers in network with us. Bucks County is willing to work with us. They've been pretty good. But again, we do need to expand our network moving forward.
Thank you. Any other questions? May I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash zero one zero four?
Motion, second.
Motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution twenty-four dash zero one zero five.
Approving agreements for the Human Services Development Fund. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve provider agreements for the Department of Human Services for the Human Services Development Fund for the fiscal year twenty-three through twenty-four for the following, Jewish Family Services and Meals on Wheels, adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April seventeen, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Chairman, once again, here's Director Durkin.
Thank you. The Human Services Development Fund is a grant program that is run through the Department of Human Services here in Lackawanna County. It's money that comes from the Department of Human Services at the state level, Office of Income Management. It's, it's pretty flexible money. It could be for low-income, mental, physical, emotional disabilities, or addiction services. So for this particular pot of money, we are just looking to enter into agreements with Meals on Wheels to provide four thousand nine hundred and thirty-four meals to homebound individuals within the county. And then the second, and that will be a contract total of twenty-nine thousand six hundred dollars. Again, this is one hundred percent reimbursable by the state. It doesn't cost the county any money. And then the second contract we're looking to enter into is with Jewish Family Services of Northeastern Pennsylvania, and they will provide eighty-seven hours of counseling services, free of charge, to individuals within the county. Again, the total cost for that contract is six thousand five hundred dollars. Again, we're just looking for the Commissioner's support on these two contracts through our Human Service Development Fund. There's no cost to the county. It's a hundred percent reimbursable through the state. Are there any questions on that?
Thank you. I don't have any questions. Anyone else? Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash zero one zero five?
Motion, second.
Been a motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution twenty-four dash zero one zero six.
Approving the Homeless Assistance Program Agreements. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve agreements for the Department of Human Services and its providers for the Homeless Assistance Program Agreement for the fiscal year twenty-three through twenty-four for the following, Catholic Social Services and the United Neighborhood Centers, adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April seventeen, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Chairman, once again, here's Director Durkin.
Thank you. Similar to the Human Service Development Fund block grant, this is the Homeless Assistance Program. It is a state program that runs through the Department of Health and Human Services here in Lackawanna County. It's block grant money that comes from the Department of Human Services Office of Income Maintenance at the state. This money, again, is very flexible. It's focused on individuals who are in need of housing assistance or who are at risk of homelessness. Hundred percent reimbursable from the state. We're looking to enter into two contracts for twenty-three, twenty-four. The first one is with Catholic Social Services for rental assistance in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. So that will actually cover individuals' rent. And then case management services in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. So the Catholic Social Services total would be fifty thousand dollars to engage individuals in obtaining rental assistance, and then obviously paying for the rental or the cost for their housing. And then the second contract is with United Neighborhood Centers for rental assistance in the amount of forty thousand dollars, and case management services in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars, and then emergency shelter costs in the amount of twenty-one thousand dollars, which would total their contract at seventy-eight thousand dollars. We've worked with these two housing providers over many, many years. They provide great services to residents in Lackawanna County. We obviously know we have a need to expand our housing-related services. So I'm simply looking for the Commissioner's support on us entering into these two contracts, which are definitely needed at this point. Again, no cost to the county. It's a hundred percent reimbursable by the state.
Thank you. Do you know, just curious, what the outreach looks like? Are they going out to these homeless encampments and trying to get people into the program, or do they wait for someone to come to them?
So historically, it's been they wait for someone to come to them. Through Human Services, we do have housing specialists who will work directly with these two providers and with those who are in the community. We actually contract with C I C, Community Intervention Centers, who does that actual outreach with the encampments. And then they, they have housing money as well through HUD and through Human Services here in the county. But then they would refer to us and then connect to these actual providers who will be doing the actual looking. So the case management would be with the individual who's in need of housing. And then case management includes looking for housing. And then the actual payment of the housing would be through these grants. But a lot of the outreach that kind of, you know, going to encampments and meeting with individuals on the ground happens through C I C or some of those other providers that we already contract with.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions? May I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash zero one zero six?
Motion, second.
Been a motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution twenty-four dash zero one zero seven.
Approving the Office of Youth and Family Service Provider Agreements. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve provider agreement for the Office of Youth and Family Services with Turning Points for Children and a provider addendum with concern for the fiscal years twenty-three through twenty-four, adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April seventeen, twenty twenty-four. Finally, once again, here's Director Durkin.
Thank you. These are two Office of Youth and Family Service contracts. One's an amendment, one's a new contract. Turning Point for Children is a new contract that we're looking to enter into for foster care services. As you know, we're, we're in a crisis within our child welfare system, and we are really in need of additional foster, foster care placements. So this is just one that we would like to add into so that we can expand our network here within Lackawanna County. The current rate is sixty-eight dollars and twelve cents. It's eighty percent reimbursed by the state, so the additional cost would come to the county, but that's across the board, pretty standard. I don't know if you want me to do them separately or do them as one. It's up to you.
Yeah, you could do them as one.
Okay. And then the second contract is with Concern. It's an existing contract provider. We're just looking to add on community-based programs as part of their contract. Adding that on will help with reunification. Obviously, we don't want individuals to remain in foster care for their, you know, entire adolescence. But adding on the community-based piece of this will help with reunification of the families. And again, this is eighty percent reimbursed by the state, and then the rest is obviously county money, which is typical. I don't know if there are any questions on any of that.
No, I don't have any, any questions from anyone? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash zero one zero seven?
Motion, second.
It's been a motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board.
Joan Hodawan, Scranton. Forgive me if I am asking questions that have been answered already since I came late. With regard to Resolution zero one zero four, the Detention Center Agreement with Bucks County, does Lackawanna County have any facility with which to house juvenile offenders?
Not within Lackawanna, no, not that's run by the county.
Should you?
I believe that we should, yes.
Are you thinking in terms of down the road, you know, enacting legislation? You know, it seems to me ridiculous that we're sending people to Bucks County or Ohio or God knows where. It should be a county responsibility. It seems like every time I open the newspaper or put on the news, there's a gang-related offense somewhere in Lackawanna County. Do you have a plan going forward? Is this one of your priorities?
We do. So the, we're looking, we've been approved by the state to potentially house juveniles in a wing of the prison. So we're working through the details of that at this point. We're not ready to announce anything officially yet. But yeah, it's, it's one of our top priorities because we realize how important it is. And this has been in discussion since we took office on January second.
I'm glad that you're making it a priority. I understand what happened in Luzerne County with the infamous Kids for Cash, but it seems to me that the pendulum has swung too far in the opposite direction, and we need to get that stable middle ground. And I mean, Lackawanna County does a lot of good things, you know, nice-to-have things. It seems to me that this is an essential, critical need, and I will be tracking how you press forward on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board?
Hi, my name's Rick Little. I'd like to talk about area agency on aging, the elderly, and the homelessness problem. I have a great insight of everything about all these things. For about ten years, I've been trying to talk to each of the Commissioners. I haven't been able to get through because I've been in a situation, I was in a situation where I couldn't go anywhere. I couldn't go to the police. Well, I did go to the police. My landlord is Scranton Housing Authority. I lived there for fourteen years, and the way they run it, they have a manager. And for many years, it was just a manager with one name. And this person, I see how it works because my housing was dependent on my thirty percent federal housing subsidy, and I could see them taking it away from me. And they kept evicting me. I prevailed in the first eviction, but they, they took all the money that I put into the court, the proposity money, they took like two thousand dollars away. So I got done with that part, and then they waited. And the reason they waited is to take away the E R A P money, which is the American Rescue Act money at the time. I heard Governor Wolf, everything, they were overcharging me. That's the other thing. It was a retaliatory eviction from the beginning. And when you think about housing, you know, why, why is Scranton Housing Authority a so-called five oh one C nonprofit? But, you know, probably the reason I got evicted because I did some rights to know, and I found out they got millions and millions of dollars. And in the lease that they take everybody to the Lackawanna County Courthouse, the state court there, the magistrate, and when you appeal it, the Court of County Police, they, they don't have records of anything. There's no records of the thousands of people that were evicted from Scranton Housing Authority. You're supposed to be, I mean, if, no one's looking at the lease. No one's looking at the federal rule. I go to the city council, I go, who owns the building? And they go HUD. All, that's all, that was a lie, you know, maybe they paid the taxes on it because they're fantastically rich. And I, so I tried to be a part of the community and get on the Scranton Housing Authority Board, and they won't let me. It's the same people for about twenty-eight years, as far as I can see, when they made the lease. And they unjustly evicted me because, and I even have a letter from the Lackawanna County lawyer solicitor for Health and Human Services, Nancy Bresi, where she says, yeah, David Coyne, and he's the district attorney, has agreed to accept your E R A P, but then they waited, all the money's gone, Judge Miles, all the money's gone. So I'm evicted, and I'm homeless, and I'm freezing to death, and I'm seventy-one years old, and I'm, you know, I, I did all my research, I court watched. When I'm court watching, everybody that's being evicted is from Scranton Housing Authority, and the thing about E R A P, and the judge kept saying, and it's the same judge, it's supposed to be a rotating judge. The court system is not just, you know, the judge, it's everything. It's the clerk. I mean, the judge I had right before, I mean, you walk in, he goes, next time we're going to trial. Well, that's not the way it works, you know? I'm entitled to discovery, to find out who my landlord is. And so after they evict me, I do, I do discovery in front of Judge Minerva or something like that, emergency discovery, and he denies it, you know? And denying my discovery, I don't have a way to send subpoenas to the people that are robbing my apartment, robbing my life. I mean, this one guy came in in two thousand thirteen, he opens up the door for the Lackawanna County Sheriff to serve a motion from a crooked lawyer in New York State Family Court. I lost my child.
Sir, unfortunately, your, your time has expired, but we appreciate your comments, and obviously, if there's any agency within Lackawanna County that can help you, we'll point you in the right direction. Okay? Thank you.
You don't have the clock here?
We're getting the clock.
Well, I think that's a big mistake, too, because this is the only way for me to talk to you. I'd like to have an appointment with you about, about this. You know, I keep calling in.
Okay.
Because I've found in this town, all I have is the public talking at Scranton City Council and here. You've taken over public access.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay. Commissioners, other business? Commissioner McGloin.
President Biden was in town yesterday, and, you know, meeting with him was a great experience, certainly was filled with a lot of excitement and pride for our community to have him, to have him back home. I'm thrilled to announce that Corey Spangerberg has filled a vacant position as the new liaison between the Rail Riders Stadium and the county. With his background as a former Major League Baseball player drafted in the first round, his expertise in baseball and extensive connections within the baseball community, I have no doubt he'll excel in this role and bring great success to the stadium and to the county. I'm thrilled to have him on board. We're currently in the process of hiring our fifth and sixth caseworker for O I F S since February. This expansion signals a positive shift within the department, and I'm grateful for, for Bob Durkin's unwavering dedication and leadership as the interim director for Human Services. While there's still much left for, for us to accomplish, these changes are promising signs of progress and improvement for our community. Two weeks ago, Commissioner Gahn and myself had the opportunity of touring the Ritz Theater right down the street on Wyoming Avenue. Was a fantastic experience. It's perfect for sharing with family and friends. So thank you to James Alecki, the owner of the Ritz, for his dedication and his efforts in revamping such a stunning venue for our, for our community to enjoy. And lastly, on Monday, myself, Commissioner Gahn, and Commissioner Chermak attended the grand opening of Dave and Buster's on Montage Mountain. This is a source of pride for Lackawanna County, not only for the job opportunities it's providing, but also for its role in fostering community engagement. I shared the news with my children, which might have been a, a big mistake. So they're, they're certainly eager to explore every corner that Dave and Buster's has, and I foresee many visits ahead, even if it means sacrificing my wallet to their gaming adventures, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Chermak.
Bring lots of rolls of quarters. So Joan, we, we have been working very hard on that detention center with the, with the president judge and our local senators here, and everybody's on board. So, you know, even though maybe the prison solution is, is maybe a Band-Aid for now, but it's something that we need to do, and it's going to be our quickest solution to moving forward. And I know we talked about maybe even regional detention centers with multiple counties. So there's a lot of things that we're talking and looking into. So, and it's, we're, it's right on our front page here. So we're on top of that. This, April fourteenth through the twentieth is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. So, you know, we're honoring our dispatchers at the nine-one center and all that they do, the, you know, the heroes behind the scenes that nobody even knows. But it's a very, at times strenuous job. It's, it's a busy place. The equipment is state-of-the-art that we have, and it, it takes a certain person to do that job. And we have some really, really good folks up there, and they're just doing a great job. So, you know, kudos to them and thanks for what they do. And lastly, coming up May eighteenth, it's not, not too far away, is our Armed Forces Day Parade that's coming up. There'll be more information. It's, it's already out there, but there'll be more information coming. But we have, there's opportunities for floats, marching bands. We have car clubs involved. So anybody that would like to participate in the, in the parade, just contact us. They have a Facebook page, the Northeast Pennsylvania Armed Forces Day Parade. You can get information there, but it's going to be a, hopefully, a great day. If the weather cooperates, it'll, it'll be, it'll be good. Nine o'clock, there's a Heroes of All Kinds runs. a Heroes of All Kinds runs, a run, so five K, and at eleven o'clock is the parade, and then meeting in the Courthouse Square. There'll be static displays and things like that, so hoping for a great day and a big event, so hopefully, everybody can attend.
Okay. Thank you. On April fourth, we received a call from a very nice gentleman regarding the condition of the American flags at Covington Park. He stated that the flags were tattered, and he suggested that they be replaced, so our Parks and Recreation Department just ordered the flags for all the parks, and they will be replacing them very soon. The county's currently accepting applications for lifeguards at McDade, Aylesworth, Covington, and Merle Saransky. You must be a Red Cross certified, you must be Red Cross certified to be a lifeguard. For more information, you can call five seven zero nine six three six seven six four. As Commissioner Chirmac mentioned, April fourteenth to twentieth is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and we just, we will officially recognize them, I think, next week, but I'd just like to recognize all of our nine-one-one professionals and all of the frontline responders during some of our worst crises. They're the people who are really doing an unbelievable job under an enormous amount of stress. Election Day is Tuesday, April twenty-third. I just want to thank our election staff, which is led by Beth Hopkins, who's our election bureau director. They have done an unbelievable job preparing for the upcoming election, and they have a great deal of work ahead of them, looking forward to November, but we always say this, but we really do have the best election bureau in the state of Pennsylvania, so we want to thank them for coming in early and leaving late. We're taking our show on the road, so to speak. Our next Commissioners' meeting will be held at the Moscow Borough Building at ten AM on May first, one twenty-three Van Brunt Street, and throughout the spring and summer, we will be going to different parts of the county to hold our meetings, has been, has been a tradition here in the past. And that's all I have. Yes?
The drop boxes at the little councils will be picked up this Friday at noon. The one remaining inside the government center here will be here till eight o'clock on election night, if anybody has any mail-in ballots.
Okay.
Also, we offer certification for our lifeguards, too.
Oh, great.
So, they can come here, apply to it, and then we send them off to Red Cross certifications.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.